Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for spending your Tuesday with us. Today is a regular voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. Today is Tuesday, July 14th, 2015. That said, Pastor Jack Shannon is the pastor here yet? Apparently, something has slowed him down, so let's move over. Councilwoman Wilcox will lead us in the pledge.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Kirkendall.
Here.
Mayor Protem Kukneu.
Here.
Councilman Arnold is absent, but he is going to try to attend telephonically. We'll call him when he's available. Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Lamerson.
Yeah.
Councilman Lozelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. John, you've got good news.
Well, yeah, yesterday, Mayor and council members, you all know that we received a letter from HUD, the Assistant Secretary, indicating that HUD had closed its file on the investigation it was conducting on our group home regulation in the zoning code or the land development code. And they stated, the letter stated that no further action will be taken by HUD. So it's a, I think it's a positive step forward in allowing the city to proceed forward in its regulations of group homes.
Super. And that's, we're assuming that that's after we had made our changes? And...
They didn't indicate either way, quite honestly. So, you know, that was pretty much what they said in the, what it said in the letter. And at this point, you know, it's, either way, it's good news. I think our current, our current land development code regulation, though, is solid, both legally and operationally.
Well, I'm sure the entire council thanks you for the work that was done on that. And that's good news. Dana, you have something?
Yes, I wanted to announce that, as you know, the upcoming city of Prescott primary election is August 3rd, or, sorry, August 25th. And in order to vote, to vote in the primary election, citizens of the city of Prescott need to register no later than July 27th. Registration forms can be obtained at the Yavapai County Recorder's Office or here at City Hall. And also, if they need to register, they can vote, register online at servicarizona.com. And if they need to update their registration, they should contact the Yavapai County Recorder's Office.
Okay.
And again, that, the last day to register vote is July 27th.
So, anyone that is registered by July 27th...
Right.
...will be able to vote in the...
Right, they will automatically...
...August 25th election.
Right, they will automatically receive a ballot the week of August 3rd.
Consent agenda. Chris, you have a question on one of the items?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead and get that behind us.
I just had a question on item B, the funding for the additional high-definition cameras and license plate readers that we're putting in the parking garage. And I asked the chief, I hadn't gotten an answer yet, but imagine that's why he's coming up here. But, you know, we already have some of those high-definition cameras in there and a license plate reader. And I understand we had an incident out there that was pretty severe. Did we get their license plate and did we get a nice Polaroid?
Mayor, members of the council, the incident that you're speaking of with the damage to the garage?
Yes.
Right, there were charges filed in that case today. And the use of the cameras that we have in place were instrumental in us figuring out and deciphering the various stories that were presented in the investigation and allowing us to move forward with charges on that. The grant application is to the Arizona Automobile Theft Authority. These are insurance dollars that are put into that organization that are then farmed out to communities to enhance our ability to find and recover stolen vehicles. So with that, we'd be able to replace the current license plate reader with one that will tap into the NCIC system. It allows for an upgrade there, and it'll also allow for additional high-definition upgrades on cameras, which will enhance our ability to conduct good comprehensive investigations for crimes committed in the garage.
And it just sounds like it's working. I mean, it sounds like the cameras are working up there, so...
It is, sir, but we do need to replace the cameras that are not high-definition.
Ten-four, got that. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor, that's all I had.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? Okay, do we have a motion for approval?
I move we approve consent agenda items A through F.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Let's vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Okay, before we go to the regular agenda, we're going to move item E up in first place. And the reason for that is, this is the item on the rezoning, that there have been enough public concern that it's going to take a supermajority vote. We don't have a full council here today, so I think it's in our best interest that we, so the people that are here waiting won't have to wait through a whole bunch of other business, that we'll go ahead and take the city presentation, George, on that. But at that point, then we will hold both, both sides of the public discussion and our discussion until our next meeting. But it will give us a couple of weeks after, to digest the city's presentation on this. Any objections from the council?
I'll read the item into the record, though.
I'm sorry.
I'll read the heading of the item.
Okay.
Okay.
And, John, is that, you see any problem with that?
No, Mayor, so as, just so I'm clear, city staff's going to make its presentation, and then the, the public hearing and council discussion and vote will be...
Postponed until...
Got it.
Actually, it'll be two weeks from today.
Not a problem.
Which gives us enough time, and the public won't have to wait through the, the rest of our agenda. But I think it's, it's critical on this where it takes at least a 61 vote, that, that we have all the information available from both sides on the same day they were asked to take the vote. So, with that said, George, go ahead.
Public hearing and adoption of ordinance number 4947-1485 for rezoning adoption of resolution number 4305-1514 for amendment of the general plan designation of property at 926 Wetstein Avenue to permit four additional dwelling units for a total of five on the lot. Property owner, Gresseth Family LP, APN 115-05-014, lot area 17,875 square feet, .41 acre.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to rezone this property. North side of Wetstein Avenue, it is in the middle of the block. This gives you a general indication of its location. You can see the edge of Willow Creek Road on the right-hand side of the, of the picture. There are a couple of buildings in between, and then this property is, like I said, just about in the middle of the block. It's an indication of the existing zoning on the site. The very light color in the middle, somewhat washed out in the photograph, is actually a light yellow that represents single-family zoning. It is currently zoned, single-family, nine, minimum 9,000 square foot lot size. The proposal is to amend the zoning of that particular parcel to make it conform to the adjacent, similar to the adjacent parcel. This is multifamily high zoning, would allow for more than one unit, and on the lot, the subject lot, it would allow up to five total units. The proposal by the applicant is to put five units on there. The existing home would remain. There would be... The existing home is here. There's an existing garage that would be removed, and then they would put two duplex dwellings on the lot for a total of five residential units. They're proposing 10 parking spaces, which is what is required. And the proposal, as shown, would meet all of our building setback requirements as well as lot coverage limitations in place at this time. Because the property was originally zoned, single-family, as shown on the zoning map, it was also designated in the city's general plan land use map when it was created in 2003 to be...
George, George, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Before you go any further. The properties that are outlined in the blue, the ones within that are multifamily high? Is that how you're reading that?
That's correct. So these are multifamily high, and then this one is multifamily high.
And so the one next to it where the H is?
And these are commercial. This one is single-family.
Okay.
Same zoning as this, so SF9. If this property is rezoned, this one will remain a single-family lot, as this one remains a single-family lot, trapped on one side by commercial and the other on multifamily. Not an unusual situation, although, for planning purposes, the preference is to have a solid block of similar zoning so that you have similar uses, compatible uses occur within those. This is not an unusual circumstance in situations where rezonings have occurred piecemeal at the behest of the property owner. Generally, the city does not initiate rezonings. In this case, the property owner of the subject property has requested a rezoning to the multifamily high designation. Again, the land use plan map in the general plan also shows it at the same low-density, single-family zoning designation. The adjacent properties are shown at the higher-density, multifamily designation. So the proposal and the, the agenda item you have before you today is a rezoning and an amendment to the land use plan in the general plan.
George, on that, this parcel right here, that's got, that can't be multifamily. There's, that's the whole business complex right there.
That's correct. It's actually, predates our zoning. It's an existing non-conforming use in that location. So they're permitted, should they cease operation or convert to multifamily, they would not be able to convert back to commercial use. And I will also point out, this is church operation, church location, church operation here. Those are permitted by conditional use in single-family zoning districts, and that's what they have in that particular case. We did get a number of neighborhood responses and input during the Planning Commission's first review of this proposal. As a result of the letters submitted to us at that time, it was very clear that there was sufficient opposition to trigger your requirement for the three-quarter supermajority vote, as we call it, six of seven. That's why we've identified that and provided that information to you in the staff report. It's our anticipation that the opposition that was expressed by immediate neighbors would remain in place, and therefore, we've, we've set this up to allow for that to occur. If the adjacent property owners, in fact, have dropped their, their opposition to it, we have not heard that and would expect to hear that through the public hearing process. If you have any other questions for us, we'd be happy to answer.
I do. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Has it to do with water?
Yes.
I think as this property is zoned today, its water entitlement is different than if you now rezone it.
That's correct.
All of a sudden, the demand for water increases.
That's correct.
And that's no longer coming out of assured water. Now it's got to come out of alternative water. Am I correct?
That is correct, yes.
So there is a potential of setting precedents throughout the city on some of the unwatered lots, as we breathe, live, breathe and speak today, that haven't been built on, where if people want to come in and have rezonings to upsize the zoning component, it could have a impact on our water.
That's absolutely correct. And we have had that circumstance occur in the past where rezonings to higher intensity have occurred.
Okay, I just want to have, have, have all the shekels out there on the, on the board.
Very good.
Okay. Anyone else? Go ahead.
George, have the applicant, has the applicant made any statements to you about the intended use of the property?
The intended use that was expressed at the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings was for rental apartments. The existing single-family home that's there is currently occupied and rented. We do have a representative here for Mr. Gresseth. If we have questions for him, we can call him up, if you'd like. We did have some concerns expressed about community residences. There is an existing community residence that's less than 500 feet away. This would not be an acceptable location under our current code for one. Would also be very unusual for community residences to go into multifamily properties. Almost all of them are in single-family properties in the city today.
Okay.
You have another? Anyone else?
Just, what are, what, that's Carlton House, there's your residence right there, right?
It's actually, this one, I believe, is Carlton House.
Okay.
And it's about 480 feet away.
What's, what, what are these that are here right now? Are these homes?
I believe both are small businesses.
Those are businesses?
And they're business owning.
And what about in the multifamily right now? What is, what's in there right there?
There is a multifamily use at the corner. The property immediately in from that, I believe, is, has a permit to remodel it to turn it into a single-family home, which is a permitted use in the multifamily zoning.
And this is a single-family home on this side as well?
I believe it, it's actually rental units. I believe it's two rental units there.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, so we understand the, there'll, there'll be no more conversation on this today, but in two weeks, we'll be back on the agenda, and testimony from both the pro and the con will be taken, and the council can have further discussion, and we'll have a full council so that a supermajority can or cannot be accomplished. Okay? So those of you that are here for that reason, we apologize, but when you lose one person and there's a need for a supermajority vote, why, we think it's important that we have everybody sitting here. So with that said, we'll go back on the regular agenda, item A.
Okay, before we do that, Ms., Mayor Kirkendall, I believe Councilman Arnold is on the phone now. Can you hear us?
Charlie, I can, thank you.
Charlie, are you with us?
Yes, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, and we thought, Charlie, that it's important that everybody be here when we make this very important decision.
I hear you on that, Mayor.
Okay. Let's go to item A, regular agenda.
Item 2A, public hearing and consideration of an application for a new Series 12 liquor restaurant license from Eriko Horikawa, applicant for Asoji, located at 1355 Iron Springs Road. Mayor and council, Ms. Horikawa is requesting a new license for a Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Asoji. The pub, the police department and the community development department have reviewed the application and found it to be in compliance. The application and license fees have been paid. The application has been posted at the proposed location for the required 20 days, and no comment, or comments from the public have been received. The applicant, I believe, is in attendance.
Who, the applicant, like to come down and give us a half hour on what you plan on doing? Come on down. Tell us about your business.
Yes, we had a...
Pull it down, so, there we go.
Yes, we had a business in downtown for nine years, and we just moved to Iron Springs Road, and we opened end of May, and since then, we are doing good. We hire more people, and we plan to hire more. Business is doing good.
Good.
And lots of people are asking when I have liquor license.
Well, great, and we've heard good things also.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments from the council?
I just think they got great fire rock beef. I wanted to go over there and do that again.
Yes, and this Thursday, we will open the teppan table that we cook in front of customers, and we have a very good professional chef. He can perform some show, small show, and at the same time, we serve the food, and lobsters, and filet mignon, scallops, and lots of seafood.
Very good. I'm sure you'll have a lot of business from those here today. Good. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to pose, or to close the public hearing. Let's vote, please.
Councilman Arnold?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Charlie. And now, how about a motion to approve the license?
Mayor, I move to approve liquor license application number 12133624 for a Series 12 restaurant license for Asoji located at 1355 Iron Springs Road.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Let's vote, please. Okay, you're on your way.
Thank you. Councilman Arnold?
Aye.
Okay. Passes unanimously.
Good. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
The Sapporo will pour. Mmm.
Okay, let's go to B.
Item 2B, public hearing and consideration of an application for a new Series 12 liquor restaurant license from Matthew Wayne McGrew, applicant from Mogi's Mongolian Grill located at 1385 Iron Springs Road, Suite B1. Mr. McGrew is requesting a new license for a Series 12 restaurant liquor license from Mogi's Mongolian Grill. The police department and the community development department have reviewed the application and found it to be in compliance, and the application has, and fees have been paid. The application has been posted at the proposed location for the required 20 days, and no public comments have been received. And the applicant is available, I believe, to answer questions.
Okay, would the applicant like to come down? Looks like your neighbors.
Yes. Good afternoon.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you. Have you guys been to Mogi's yet?
Yes, I have.
And?
I loved it.
Good, good. Yeah, so, a lot of customers, they come in, they're like, where's the beer and wine? So, yeah, we took the plunge and went through the process, and here we are.
And Mayor, I'll brag on him a little bit. You know, he has a system. I don't know if anybody else has been there yet, but you kind of get this bowl, and you go through, and all these foods are laid out, and they're frozen, and some aren't, but you, you fill your bowl up, and then you give it to the guy at the end, and he throws it on the grill. And you even have recipes for the different sauces. It's kind of an experience. You mix it all up together, put it in the bowl, and you chow down. So it's a good experience. I'm glad you brought it. And that's one thing, you know, Prescott doesn't get a lot of the big chains, but we get a lot of really quality mom and pops, you know, like yours, Asoji's, you know, Indian. You can eat almost anything downtown Prescott or beyond. And thanks for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
That's a pretty good testimonial.
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Councilman Arnold?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion to approve the license?
Move to approve the license, liquor license application number 12133625 for a Series 12 restaurant license for Mogi's Mongolian Grill located at 1385 Iron Springs Road, Suite B1.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
I have a question.
Shoot.
After the fact, knowing that both of these two new liquor licenses are pretty close to each other, is there a legality of how close liquor establishments can be?
Not, not, Mayor and council, no, not, not to each other. There isn't, there's buffer zones for certain types of licenses around schools and churches, but those don't even apply to restaurant licenses. So, I mean, as you know, you can look at Whiskey Row, and they're literally side by side, so...
I never have seen that.
I'm guessing that.
Okay.
Blind brother.
Let's go to item C.
Item 2C, adoption of ordinance number 4948-1486, setting the fiscal year 2016 city property tax levies. Ordinance number 4948-1486, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, levying upon the assessed valuation of the property within the city of Prescott, subject to taxation, a certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget, less the amount estimated to be received from other sources of revenue, providing funds for various bond redemptions for the purpose of paying interest upon bonded indebtedness, and providing funds for the general municipal expenses, all for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2016.
Thank you, Dana. I'm glad she asked to read that, not me. We had the public hearing for this back with our budget public hearing on the 23rd of June. This is the schedule from the legals that were adopted as part of the budget. As you can see, last year's primary was 1.57, this year's 1.596. The increase is related to additional construction value that was put on the tax rolls. The secondary tax of $75,000 is to pay the debt service, with the last outstanding issue on the lakes. Fiscal 2017, which is the next budget year, will be the last year of that secondary tax. We talked about all this at the public hearing and also at the budget workshops, but here is a snapshot of the last several years of property tax and what has happened. With that, I'd be glad to answer any specific questions.
Good. Any questions or comments from the public?
Mark, just for, on the record, this is a decrease.
It's a decrease in the rate, yes, an increase in the levy related to the new construction, but a decrease in the rate, and on an average, $2,000, $200,000 house, which is what we use as sixty.
You've got to stop there, just say it's a decrease.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, John, we've complied with all the legal requirements, so this can wrap it up.
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 4948-1486.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Have a second? Got a second?
Two of you, yeah.
Let's vote.
Councilman Arnold?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, when you're ready, Dana, let's go to D.
Item 2D, approval to accept a 2014 assistance to firefighters grant for self-contained breathing apparatus in the amount of $411,273.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. We're seeking your approval this, this afternoon to accept the grant in the amount noted, $411,273. Karen Canisero was instrumental in securing this grant as part of the assistance for firefighters grant application process. She went through, dotted the i's, crossed the t's, provided the narrative, and with that, we were notified of a potential award pending your approval. Just as a little bit of background information, every few years, basically on a decade to a decade and a half cycle, our compliance with self-contained breathing apparatus falls out of compliance. We get to the point where you can no longer manage the equipment, there's changes into the industry. And with that, we are taking our recently acquired stuff that's about 13 years old from the 2002 standard, which had applied at the time, and bringing it up to date to the 2013 standard. We have a number of units that we'll make available to all our frontline apparatus, along with our reserves and our chief officers, to ensure they have the needed personal protective equipment available for interior firefighting as necessary. There is a 10% grant match on this, which takes that tune to about $41,000, $41,127.30. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to entertain those at this time.
Jim?
Not as much a question as a compliment. I, you know, this is federal money, but it's our money too, because we're part of the federal government as much as we're part of the state, as much as we're part of the county. Thank you for bringing this kind of grant. It's good for our people in the fire department, which means it's good for us that own properties in the city.
Thank you, Councilman Lamerson.
Steve?
A question to the city manager, that amount of money, forty, or $450,000, was in the general fund budget as a capital item, and now that we were successful, thanks to Karen, in receiving this grant, what happens with that money?
Well, councilman, as indicated in the staff report, in order to balance the budget, and this is a very large amount of money, obviously, $411,000, in order to balance the budget, we had contemplated taking this money, if we didn't get the grant, out of the general fund reserve, which is a balance available for all general fund expenditures, lawful expenditures of the city. So, since the grant was received in the amount of $411,000, that will effectively be an avoided expense, and that amount will remain in the general fund reserve rather than drawing it down.
Thank you for that.
Anyone else? Questions, comments, public? That's an okay, Dan? Okay, Charlie, any question?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, move to approve the acceptance of a 2014 assistance to firefighters grant in the amount of $411,273 for self-contained breathing apparatus units.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you, Chief, good job. Okay, item E, we handle. Let's move on to item F.
Item 2F, special use permit, SUP 14-005, for the installation of a cell tower at
Item 2F, special use permit, SUP 14-005, for the installation of a cell tower at 930 Ruth Street, Site Zoning Business General, property owner, Prescott Unified School District, APN 116-19-006.
Mayor and Council, this is a request for a special use permit to allow the installation of a cell antenna on a pole in the location of an existing pole at the site at Prescott Unified School District located on Ruth Street at Whipple Street. The existing location is a ball field. There are 60-foot-high poles that hold up a netting behind the backstop to protect the street from balls flying over and out of the field. The intention and the request is to replace one of those poles with an existing, with a similar height pole, it's also 60 feet, but with an antenna array attached to it. So, the pole's been designed and strengthened to hold the antenna array, but it goes back in the same location, and it actually will serve the same function as the existing pole. It will hold up the backstop netting that is in place today. The pole location is more than 60 feet away from the street, so it meets our fault distance requirements, which is one of the things that we typically talk about as part of an SUP for any type of cellular antenna sites. The request is to replace the pole, put the antenna up, reattach the netting to it, and operate at that location in a manner typical of cell sites elsewhere in town. The SUP does require, because it exceeds 50 feet in height, specific, and it's part of our proposal, part of the SUP proposal, specific allowance to exceed the district height to go to 60 feet rather than 50. And that additional height allows for the pole to actually meet the existing pole heights of the poles holding the backstop netting. We do have a representative from Verizon here, and I would be happy to answer any other questions, although I do want to point out one topic that came up during the planning commission review. There was a question raised by a representative of the hospital, which is just west of this location, about the FAA review of the pole heights. Again, this pole is the same height as the existing that are already on-site, so no additional height is being requested through the SUP process. But as a result of that request, the Verizon representative provided us information that in fact the FAA is part of their FCC review licensing and review process, and has looked at this location and found no requirement to light this particular pole with hazard lighting. With that, again, we do have a representative here from Verizon. If you have specific questions about that, or questions about the zoning or the criteria, I would be happy to answer.
Yeah, you and George, or?
George.
You and George. I've got one for you, George.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the distance to the nearest occupied structure?
The nearest occupied structure is actually is a church across the street. That's just to the east of this location, and it's about 104 feet.
Okay, thanks.
Same building, George?
They're going to use the existing location of a pole and the equipment that typically would have a separate building will actually be attached to the existing dugout that's already there. So, no new structure there, right.
Okay. Anyone else?
I do. I have a question.
Sir.
Generally speaking, when these are located on private property, these companies pay the private property a yearly fee? What is usually that yearly fee?
I do not know. It varies depending on the property and the necessity for the pole and location. It is something that's often negotiated between the private property owner and Verizon or the other cell tower operators. Again, we do have a representative here from Verizon who may be able to...
I don't know that I need to know that. The point I'm trying to make is at least I'm glad to see that the Unified School District, knowing what kind of finances they need, that this may very well help their situation. So, I'm glad to see that it benefits them as well.
Very good.
Comments from the public? Yes, we don't need you. Do we have a motion?
Mayor?
Want me to do it, Jim?
Go ahead.
Okay. Move to approve SUP 14005 for installation of a cellular monopole antenna at 930 Ruth Street with a maximum pole height of 60 feet.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote please.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, item G.
Item 2G, approval of purchase of 2,160 each 65-gallon residential containers from Auto Environmental using Houston-Galveston area council contract pricing in the amount of $100,609.82 solid waste fund.
And I'm going to declare potential conflict of interest and take a powder on this one.
Okay.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Solid Waste Division relies on high-density polyethylene composite residential containers to service the solid waste and residential needs of the community. Currently, there are 31,000 containers in use citywide, each having a useful life of approximately 10 years. The Division delivers approximately 40 new containers per week, which is about a 7% replacement for each year. Replacements are due to a number of factors, including the age and condition of containers in the field, new customers, and requests for extra containers. For the past three years, the Solid Waste Division has used HGAC contract pricing to purchase the Auto Environmental containers. The containers are high-quality, fit the size and shape of the collection vehicle grippers, and have a wider wheelbase that allows the container to remain upright in windy conditions. The Division has a sufficient supply of replacement parts for this particular brand of containers. Due to the success of the last three purchases, the efficiency gained by standardizing the containers, the Division is again requesting to purchase containers from Auto using the HGAC contract price of $42.46 per each 65-gallon container. This purchase price is unchanged from FY14 and FY15, and the proposed purchase quantity is projected to allow the Division to fulfill container needs for the entire year of FY16. The FY16 solid waste fund includes $130,000 for containers, and the HGAC contract pricing remains at $42.46 per container for a total amount of $100,609.82, including freight and tax. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Question?
I've got one, Mayor. You guys don't order like 1,000 at a time, you order little lots at a time for replacement?
Well, they come in truckloads, and since it's coming from Eloy, Arizona, we tend to do a full truckload.
But I mean, you're not ordering 100,000 dollars worth?
No, 720 containers per load, and it's three loads of containers.
Okay, thank you.
Question, the, more recently, at one time, the blue containers were smaller than the large ones, but lately, we're seeing the same size. Is that the new program?
Well, absolutely. We want to encourage as much recycling as possible. If I could go back in time and give everybody small garbage cans and big recycle cans, that's what I would do. But there's too much infrastructure out there, and we've already put too much money into the program as it is, so we don't want to replace. But what we are seeing is a big trend in people turning in the smaller containers for the larger recycled containers. In fact, we did 343 swapouts in FY15, which accounts for the reason we need so many containers each year, is we are, through attrition, swapping those smaller ones out. And I believe it was 2001, they purchased like 15,000 of those containers. So, there's a lot out there.
And the swapout costs nothing to the...
To the resident, no.
Okay. Because I need one, too.
Yeah, absolutely. Call in.
Maybe we could sell all the old ones to Chris.
I don't know if there's a conflict there. But we also do recycle the old ones that come in broken, and we get paid for the recycling on that, too. So, we do make a little bit of revenue to offset cost.
Good. Any comments, questions? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the purchase of 2,160 65-gallon residential containers from Auto Environmental using Houston-Galveston, well, council HGAC contract pricing in the amount of $100,609.82. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote please.
Aye.
Passes 6 to 0.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you, Council.
Okay. H, when you're ready.
Item 2H, adoption of resolution number 4294-1503, ordinance number 4935-1473, and ordinance number 4935, I'm sorry, 4936-1474, amending engineering and utility fees with an effective date of September 1st, 2015. Ordinance number 4935-1473, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title III, Section 3-14-11D of the City Code of the City of Prescott. An ordinance number 4936-1474, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title II, Section 2-1-12, Section 2-1-15, Section 2-1-18, Section 2-1-21, Section 2-1-25, and Section 2-1-29 of the City Code of the City of Prescott.
Good afternoon, Henry.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This item outlines proposed adjustment to fees for various plan reviews, inspection, and utility activities provided by the Public Works Department, and how they are calculated in order to more reasonably recover our cost. These including some of the new requirements that we put upon us. This item was discussed before you at your June 2nd workshop. We discussed it in detail. We have been working with our partners throughout the process, and at the June 2nd meeting, we had both Sandy Griffiths and Mike Phan were present in support of this. Gwen Roach and myself are here to answer any more questions that you may have.
Henry, just before we go to those things, can I just share with Councilman Cook, you know, in your absence, Mayor was thinking about you, tried to procure all those worn-out garbage bins for you?
We made you a good deal.
Yeah, I know. I heard you. There's a TV out in the hallway, and just, those garbage cans are too small, and I buy new ones, so...
Well, just so you know, we were thinking of you.
Greg, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mayor. Henry, and I brought this up the last time you presented this to us. In a nutshell, these extra ordinances that we're getting ready to vote on will streamline the process, make it more, the engineers and everybody that deals with you, it's all a level playing field, and the customer service level, in the end, that's what this is about.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Public?
Mayor, if I could for just a second?
Yes, got you. Go ahead.
Yep, I appreciate staff bringing this forward. Henry and I've had several conversations leading up to today, and I do think this is a move in the right direction, and I have confidence that our staff is going to do everything possible to make sure that we not only keep our current service level, but we strive to improve it with this new fee structure.
Seeing no question from the audience, two separate motions.
There'll be three motions, and I'll do it. I move to adopt resolution number 4294-1503.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote please.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Now, number two, and there is three.
Move to adopt ordinance number 4935-1473.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote please.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
And now, number three.
Move to adopt ordinance number 4936-1474.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote please.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Okay. Item I.
Item 2I, approval to perform night work along North Montezuma Street associated with the Montezuma Street pavement and utility upgrade project.
Good afternoon, Steve.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Members of the City Council, this item is for the consideration of the Council to perform night work for our North Montezuma Road and Utility Improvement Project. The project is out for bid right now, and as the code requires for any night work, the Council needs to approve it. On June 18th of this year, we had a public meeting inviting the business and residents in the area, and it was in unanimous support of not doing the work during the day, but doing the work at night between 8:00 PM and 6:00 AM as the outer limits because of the amount of traffic and the impact, potential impact on businesses. This is not approving the project for construction, it's just the night work element of it. The project is scheduled, technically scheduled to begin after Labor Day and be completed before Thanksgiving of this year. And the actual award of the construction contract will come before you in August at some point. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
I guess to summarize this, in order to get proper bids, you need to make sure that this is approved.
One way or the other, either way is fine with us, we just need to give direction to the bidders. It's staff's opinion that night work would be the preferred alternative.
Chris? I have a question.
Chris is up, but then you can have it, yeah.
So, this is about a three-month project?
Correct.
If they went around the clock, would we be done in a month, or? I mean, I didn't know if that would be a better way to reduce the impact on it. If we just went 24 hours a day, would it...
There could be some benefit to that, but there's just some steps that you have to take, one before the other, that you may not be able to get any economies of scale in that regard.
10/4, thank you.
Steve?
Just a history question, back, you know, when it was when the state came in and redid all of Montezuma Street for us to be able to take it over, to change it from a truck route to a city maintained? They came through and took out all the old facilities at that time, repaved the whole thing. How many years ago was that?
Very good question. I think George, do you remember?
That was before my time.
Okay. So, it was seven to, more than seven years ago.
More than 15.
More than 15 years ago.
Was it that long ago?
Yeah.
Okay. Just curious, because I was going to ask the question, at that time when they did that, I would have thought we would have replaced, at the state cost, the water mains and the sewer at that time, but evidently, we didn't.
Yeah, it was some time ago.
Anyone else? Yes, sir, come on down.
All right.
Gary, how are you?
Doing all right.
Good.
Seems like yesterday. I was sitting here watching all the liquor license approvals.
Tell us who you are.
And...
Can I get your name for the record?
Gary Denny.
Okay.
32 years ago, I got my first liquor license approval for Budgen Ossie's upstairs in the Apache Motel. One of the reasons we don't want to work 24 hours a day on Montezuma Street is because the two partners that get everything done in the City of Prescott are tax dollars and infrastructure. 115 years ago, we were watching this town burn. We have to keep our businesses open, and there's no way I'm going to be open with construction going around the clock on the street where we have the oldest continually-operated Mexican restaurant in northern Arizona. So, I vote that we don't do that. I really push that we do this at night, because, you know, it's a, you know, we took away the summer when we put school back, and August 1st, it used to end at Labor Day weekend, so we lost 30 days of tourism there. Now, we're talking about the road construction during what we have left of the summer season. So, anything we can do to lessen the impact for the business downtown would be awesome. It would be great.
So, and it was just a question asked and trying to get it done, because I know it does impact you guys down there. So, during the day, they'll cover up anything they did and leave the streets open and the parking available, then?
That's correct.
Great.
Perfect.
What are the night hours?
8:00 PM to 6:00 AM.
Does that create a problem, Gary?
Perfect, just right.
You're going to serve them breakfast in the morning, right?
6:00 AM, be out there with burritos, you got. Get them going. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Gary.
Okay. Anyone else? Charlie, any questions?
No, Mayor. When this comes up for the contract, I'll have a few about the PR firm, but I'm good at this point.
Okay. Do we have a motion for item I?
Move to approve night work along North Montezuma Street associated with Montezuma Street pavement and utility upgrade project during the hours of 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM, Sunday through Thursday, throughout the project during September through November 2015.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Vote please.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
When you're ready, item J.
Item 2J, award of city contract number 2016-005 to Woodson Engineering and Surveying to provide engineering services for the Hope Street roadway improvement project and Autumn Breeze sidewalk and scupper replacement project in an amount not to exceed $61,540.
Thank you, Dana. Thank you, Dana. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this item is for, is a design contract with Woodson Engineering for surveying and engineering and post-design services for the Hope Street Improvement Project and the Autumn Breeze Sidewalk and Scupper Replacement Project. There are two smaller projects that we combined into one contract for efficiencies. The Hope Street project is an unpaved street currently that was on the schedule to get chip-sealed and with some minor maintenance by our city forces. As we were coordinating with the Fields and Facility Department, we had determined that there was been a number of drainage problems in the area, so we suggested that we create this project to address both issues at the same time, both the pavement and the drainage issues in the area. So, this project is going to combine those. It's just off White Spar. The second part of the project is the Autumn Breeze Sidewalk and Scupper Replacement Project. This started about a year ago from a resident complaint that water was overtopping the drain and impacting the private property. We evaluated it and determined that there could be some improvements to the drainage system. We were able to complete the sidewalk and curb ramp replacement this past week, so that part is going to help the resident this monsoon season with any, to minimize the drainage issues there. But we are going to move forward with the drainage element, because it is starting to impact the roadway at this point. The procurement occurred earlier this year, where we ranked various consultants who went to interest of various projects we had out, looking forward to having the design completed by the first of the year. The design fee is about 10.2% of the estimated construction cost for the project. There is some FEMA coordination with base flood elevations in the area and some significant surveying for the project. Be able to answer any questions as you have? Thank you.
Question. Jean?
I do have a question. In our packet, Woodson Engineering submitted additional terms and conditions.
That's correct, and we, that was in my notes that I happened to skip over. There was some terms and conditions that were unacceptable to the city attorney. Those have been modified by the consultant to the satisfaction of the city attorney, and those amended terms and conditions will be in the final agreement that the mayor signs.
Good.
I have a question.
Yep.
Not to beat the dead horse again, but that city light subdivision is not that old. Why is it that we're going back in again and replacing something that developers should have done in the first place? And what assurance is there to the public and future councils of the new subdivisions that were just approved up there off of Senator Highway, that that process and the approval of those subdivisions were done with an engineer that addressed the drainage issues, so we as taxpayers aren't coming back to fix their errors?
There's a very good question, councilman. There are improved inspection standards. The Department of Public Works has implemented in the past several years. We have our engineering standards that are coming before you shortly that are improving those review standards. Our drainage engineer is very astute and picking up these issues, and that's why when he looked at this, he said, "We need to make some improvements here." We have implemented quite a few checks and balances at this point in the life of Public Works that is improving the, these conditions so that, to minimize these future, these issues coming about in the future.
I appreciate that, because it is a cost every time one of these comes up, and I recognize that we have a new drainage engineer on board, so hopefully, we'll improve this.
Yes, he's been making a great contribution over the past year, almost two years now.
Anyone else? Public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, move to award city contract number 2016-005 to Woodson's Engineering and Surveying to provide engineering services for the Hope Street roadway improvement project and Autumn Breeze sidewalk and scupper replacement project in the amount not to exceed $61,540.
Second.
Second. Motion made in seconded, vote please.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
You're still on your feet?
I got one more.
Item K.
Item 2K, award of city contract number 2016-008 to Shepherd Wesnitzer Incorporated for engineering services for the South Washington Avenue East Goodwin Street Improvements Project in amount not to exceed $306,588.
Thank you, Dana. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this item is, was presented to you on May 26th. This is a reconstruction project of South Washington and East Goodwin Streets in the area south of Gurley Street. When we first presented it in May, we had a consultant fee for the project. There was some discussion about considering two additional blocks on East Goodwin Street over towards Penn Avenue. We've gathered that information, and it's in your staff report here. The engineering contract did increase, if it's, if it's to your approval, for the additional two blocks by $49,034. The estimated construction cost increased by about $544,000. There is funds that we can find in our CIP program to cover the additional engineering at this time, if that's the council's desire. There may need to be some reorganization with some of the lower priority projects to accommodate that. The construction dollars will be refined during this process, and if there's determined that we do not have enough allocated for this fiscal year in '16, the design of the project will be able, will allow us to go and program additional construction dollars in next fiscal year in FY17. So, there's options for the council to consider approving all of the design right now and then possibly phasing the project when it comes to construction. We can also explore some additional grant funding for a safe route to school or even some flood control dollars if there's some drainage elements that evolve in this design.
Jean, this is your, I think your concern at the previous time. Do you want to comment on that?
Yes, and I really appreciate your going back and taking another look at Goodwin Street. I do believe that it warrants something, reconstruction sidewalks, whatever you decide, but it needs to be in better condition, those two blocks. And it certainly makes sense to put it as part of this total project in Washington Street.
There is some merit to that, since we're looking at Penn Avenue, and that project's already been approved for design, so there would be some connectivity there.
Craig, any comments on whether we should, if we consolidate it, we would need a different recommend, or a different motion here, would we not?
No, mayor, the, to my understanding, the scope of work and the engineering contract before you is for the expanded project.
Correct.
And as Mr. Rose has pointed out, there may be some moving around depending upon what the final construction estimate is and the actual bid results. There may be some moving around within the, within the program because of the increased construction costs of about $500,000 or so, but certainly, in a program of this size, the road construction, annual road construction project, that is certainly something that can be accomplished. And so, our recommendation would be to move ahead with the design, and as the project is refined and designed and cost estimating and then programmed for construction, then any changes can be revisited at that time.
Okay. John, a new, a new motion?
No, it's the same. It's the same motion. Motion, mayor, in the, in the packets, fine, that it's been, it's been adjusted to contemplate.
So, this one's okay?
Correct. This is the updated motion and packet.
Okay.
I do have a question.
True.
Did you have a question?
No.
My question is, is you mentioned going forward with trying to get some safe route to schools and some of the other available monies to bring back to the city of Prescott.
Yes.
I'd suggest you do that sooner than later, so that we can better figure out where the money's coming from on the extra.
Yes, that is part of our plan.
Thank you.
Anything further? Comments from the public? Okay, take a motion.
Mayor, I move to award city contract number 2016-008 to Shepherd Wesnitzer Incorporated for engineering services for the South Washington Avenue slash East Goodwin Street Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed $306,588.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, vote please.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Neil?
Item 2L, adoption of resolution number 4304-1513, approving a water service reimbursement agreement, district number 92, for the Perry Street Alley Water Reimbursement District.
Thank you, mayor and council. The item before you is a request by Lance and Catherine Moody to form a reimbursement district for the 274 feet of 4-inch water line that they installed in the Perry Street Alley, shown right here on the map. This water line will serve the two parcels shown here and here. No other parcels will benefit from this main line extension. The Moody's installed the line following public procurement law and City Code Section 2110. The total project was $37,279. The proportional shares are based on acreage and divided equitably based on the, on the acreage amount. The district will remain in effect for 15 years, and at that time, it will extinguish. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the formation of the district.
Questions from the council? Who enforces this? How do we enforce it?
When a property owner comes to the city and requests a permit to construct a building on the property, we have mechanisms in our software that trigger that a reimbursement district fee is due on this particular parcel, and then that fee is applied at the time of permitting.
And how does that person know in advance that there is another fee? Is there something recorded to the property, or?
This is a, this is a recorded document, so yes, they would typically know through a title search when they purchase it that it was in effect.
And those are initiated by a property owner themselves?
They are.
Okay, got it.
Is this a, is this a city ordinance that they, to make this district, or is this something that happens all over the place?
Our city code does provide this mechanism to property owners who build public infrastructure. They don't have to do it, but in this case, they, they chose to attempt to recover some of the costs of the, of the infrastructure that they put in.
Thanks.
Okay. Comments from the public? Okay, motion?
Mayor, excuse me. I move to adopt resolution number 4304-1513.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, let's vote, please.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Anything further to come before the council?
I'll take it in an hour, first of all.
4:05, we're out of here.